Hi, I'm Anne Barbenow of Life Stories. Tonight I've assembled four different people from the early 1980s that were on the Board of Alderman, they were called Board of Alderman in Burlington, now they're called City Councilors. And they're going to give us a little bit of a story about what was happening in the early 1980s, coming in as a third party. The first person I'm introducing is Terry Baricius. He served from 1981 to 1991. The second person is Zoe Briner, 1982 to 1986. Gary, Rick Mustey is 1982 to 1986, sorry Rick. And Gary DeCarolus, 1982 to 1986. And I actually want to start out with Terry. Terry, you became a Citizens Party candidate. And I read that you were the first national?
Yeah, Citizens Party was a group that was founded in around 1980, I guess. Barry Commoner was an environmentalist who ran for President of the United States, didn't get a lot of votes, but there was a Vermont chapter, Rick was part of it. In fact, all of us were at some point. And in 1981, along with Bernie Sanders, I got elected. It was, to some extent, a shock. I thought I had a chance, but I didn't think it would really happen. But yeah, so I was the first one nationally. Citizens Party has long since evaporated. And we evolved and left that name behind and reorganized eventually as the Progressive Coalition.
So Bernie was a Citizens Party candidate too?
No, actually, he wasn't. He was just running as an independent, but you know, we were sort of, we worked together. But he was never a member of that party. He'd been part of the Liberty Union Party years before that, not when he ran for mayor, he was just running as an independent.
So why did you choose to run?
Gosh. You know, I first got involved in local politics when I was a student at Middlebury College because Bernie Sanders came and spoke at the University at Middlebury College. And he inspired me. It's like, he was talking about things that most politicians were ignoring, and he was talking the truth, you know, really getting at issues. And I got involved with the Liberty Union Party back then, and I'd run for things before. I mean, I was a political person. I wanted to save the world and my neighborhood, both. And when I lived in Burlington, I'd run for the State Senate, and then said, you know, I did really well in the neighborhood right where I live, what if I run for the City Council? And I did, and I won.
I think for me, I was living here in the early 1980s, and I know some of the Bernie supporters were independents. They ran as independents. Did each one of you run as an independent, or did you have a title? Were you Citizens Party, were you progressive? Tell me a little bit about the history of how it became the Progressive Party.
The first time I ran, I ran on Citizens Party ticket. I was never a political person. I got involved because of my interest and concern with what was happening with the woodship plant. And Vermont Alliance organizers knocked on my door one day, and we organized a neighborhood group and did things like get stop signs across the street from the park, and little things like that. But then the woodship plant is really what inspired me to run.
What war does this, Zoe?
War II. But I ran Citizens Party for the benefit of the party organization and help in running the campaign because I had never done anything like this before. And the second time I ran, I believe I ran Progressive Coalition, because by that time Citizens Party was pretty much gone.
How about you, Rick?
Same story for me. I ran Citizens Party the first time around, and then I think it was Progressive Coalition the second, because Citizens Party had vanished. Actually, I got interested through Terry. Terry and actually Eon Moskakis, who was then a Citizens Party promoter and member.
He was. Oh, yes. He inspired me as well.
Dropped by my house one Saturday afternoon to just talk. And I had known Eon indirectly and not well before that. And we sat in my living room and talked a little bit about it, and I said, yeah, I think I'd like to do it. And subsequent to that, I went down and met Bernie in his office, and we had a back-and-forth conversation to see if we had ideas and attitudes that were similar. And they were, and I felt that they were similar enough, he felt that they were similar enough. So then it was off to the races from there.
And Gary?
Well, Citizens Party the first time, although I lost my first election in 1981 when Terry and Sadie White won. The reason why I ran was too, my neighborhood was absolutely falling apart. It was not getting any city services or support. And I was involved in the old, it's called One Voice, the Old North End Voice at the time. It was a group of people concerned, Citizens of Ward II and III, who really wanted to try to make a difference for our part of town. The other thing that motivated me at the time was John Lennon was, had recently been shot. And music and people saying those things that I thought were important to be said, upon his death, I felt like, okay, it was time for me to step up to the plate, to start doing the things that I was hoping other people would do or had done for me in the past. And it was the combination of both. The interesting thing about my loss that first year is that I was running against Sadie. I hadn't done much outreach to see who was running and who Bernie was going to support or, and I didn't know Sadie really at that time, I didn't know Bernie at that time. So we ran, there was three of us, a Democrat, Sadie ran as a quasi-independent.
Independent Democrat.
She was bumped out by the party there.
She was pissed off at the party.
At the Democrats.
At the Democrats.
And then I ran as a Citizens Party. When the, we went to look at the votes on the machines, we were all within a few votes. Like, it was like 325, 330, 335, it was very, very close. Then they counted the absentee ballots, and the other two, each Sadie and the Democrat, each had about 100. And I didn't even know what an absentee ballot was at that point. I had zero. And so they went on, and I backed Sadie, and they had a runoff, and Sadie won. Then next year, when I ran, Sadie backed me, and Bernie was supportive, and then I joined them.
That first year with Sadie White and me as Bernie's only supporters on the City Council was really a Board of Alderman at that time. It was really something. Sadie and I would always drive to the meetings together because she wanted somebody to walk her to her car after the meeting. Sometimes I'd go on my own, and she'd drive during daylight hours, but after the meetings, I'd walk her back to her car, and she'd drop me home.
We should mention Sadie was how old at this time?
Eighty?
No one really knows exactly, in her eighties.
She was a fascinating person.
Yes, and she's still active today. And you know, she's been involved in politics and union activity, you know, for decades in Burlington, very influential person. And so it was basically Sadie White and myself with Bernie Sanders against the rest of the City Council. And you have to understand, in those days, City Council had been dominated by the Democratic Party for so long, people, you know, we were just considered a fluke. And they sat us on the opposite ends of the table, so we couldn't speak to each other. And Bernie was at our table back there, and we couldn't speak to him. Before then, there had been, let's see, what, 11 Democrats and two Republicans.
Terry, excuse me, but who was doing the seating?
The President of the City Council decides who sits where. And, well, it was Joyce Desatell the first year, but then she stepped down, and the replacement was Blanchard, I guess. And anyway, so it was very difficult, because it was hard even to get, you know, recognized to speak and...
Why was that? Why was there so much animosity? I remember the newspapers talking about the abrasiveness of the progressives and Bernie's people.
Well, actually, the headlines at the time weren't about the abrasiveness of the progressives. The headlines at the times were all about the stonewalling of the Democrats. Because what happened is that the Charter says that the mayor should make certain appointments, you know, the city clerk, city treasurer, city attorney, and so on. So the mayor made those appointments, and the City Council stonewalled and refused to confirm any of his appointments without any hearings, any consideration of their qualifications. They said, the mayor, well, they didn't even call him the mayor, Sanders' election was a fluke, we just have to wait him out for two years, and we're going to run this city, we're not going to let this interloper, Bernie Sanders, run this show. And so Bernie Sanders actually had to try and sue the City Council just to get his Charter given authority to make certain appointments. I mean, it was, it was an absolute conspiracy to deny the mayor. And that really pissed off a lot of people. People organized, a group called Citizens for Fair Play organized, leafleted, had rallies. And the upshot was that after a year of this, with the mayor basically having no administration, I mean, the first thing the City Council did, Board of Alderman, when Bernie got elected, the first meeting was to fire his secretary, who he had just hired. That was the very first action the City Council ever did towards Bernie Sanders, and then refused to appoint him. So after a year of this, where quite frankly, public opinion was just, the Democrats, they're just like, oh, forget it, they're just being outrageous, they're not letting, we elected the guy mayor, let him be mayor. And so the upshot was, these three guys got elected one year later.
A year later. Right, when we came on board, I think then they realized they had to take this election a little more seriously, especially because we defeated incumbents pretty, I defeated a Democratic lawyer, you know, and...
Who was that?
Russ Neke.
And actually, I defeated the previous President of the Board and a woman, Joyce Desatell, who had been very popular and had quite liberal views as a Democrat. So it was really, in a way, surprising. I won by 45 votes. And I can remember standing in the shower and hearing my son yelling upstairs, "You won, you won, you won." And I was, I just couldn't believe it. After having stood out in the cold all day.
And the thing about, you know, how controlled the city was by one party, there was, I could remember standing on the poles that day, and people would walk by, barely give you any eye contact. And if you had, if I was trying to get a sense of how good or bad I was doing by how people were looking at me or not, I wasn't going to win. And what was happening is they were, they didn't want to show any sign to the other candidate, who was a Democrat, that they would be supporting me. So they just kind of walked in, walked out. In fact, a lot of them, they called our offices to pick them up, and they wanted to be left off around the school building and walk around, so the Democrats didn't see that they were picked up by us to vote. They had literally abandoned the party, the Democratic Party, in big numbers. But it was a very strange thing for them and a very strange for us.
I don't get the animosity, though. Where was all of this coming from? I mean, Republicans and Democrats still have worked together.
Control and power, right?
Yeah, I think I have one, two kinds of explanations. One was, actually came from a Republican who sat next to me, who was a wonderful man as a person, Bob Patterson. And Bob said, he was on the Board for a long time and had been a member, and he said, you know, being on this Board as a Republican, there've only been two of us, there was nothing we could ever do, and they always shut us out and didn't allow us to bring forward any legislation or really talk or be involved. And we just sort of hung in here because we were Republicans. And I think that it's a classic case of a group of people that had had power since, I believe, 1952.
Quite a while.
And they'd gotten to the point where they were complacent, and they owned it, and they controlled it. And one striking example of that was that people who were Democrats, and including high public officials, could borrow money from the retirement fund of the city at very low interest rates to go out and buy themselves a vacation home on Lake Champlain. And that's one of the things that we called in, we called those notes.
They only had to pay the interest.
And they only had to pay the principal back. So I think that what had happened over years is people had gotten very comfortable with each other, and they built relationships that were classic sort of military-industrial complex types of relationships, you know, if you stroke my back, I'll stroke your back. And they felt like it was breaking down under them, and it was. Political power was being lost.
Were you a different generation, too?
Not completely. There were some very young people on there also. Mostly, I would say, we were younger than the incumbents, but what was his name, Sweeney from Ward IV had been the youngest, he'd been like a basketball star or something like that in the school.
Yep, really in high school.
And so there were some young people there also. But I think it was, one of the reasons for so much animosity is we were sort of exposing the dark side of the Democratic Party, the establishment had, they were doing all kinds of just really, you know, inappropriate things. Like the city's insurance policy, we discovered that they had this cartel of insurance companies that would analyze the city's insurance needs, write the policies, and then sell them to themselves. And the City Council never put it out for bid, never examined it, the mayor never, and when we looked at it, it put out for bid, save, you know, like 30%, 50%, something outrageous. And there were a lot of things like that. We've discovered the city had a huge surplus in its fund balance.
That they didn't even know.
Didn't even know about. The treasurer at the time was somebody who didn't even have bookkeeping experience when he was appointed, he was just a friend, I think he was like an education speech pathologist or something like that, wasn't an accountant, and he was the city treasurer. He didn't know how to keep books. And, you know, you go on and on, you find all kinds of stuff that was just like screwy. And when we started bringing it to light, it was very embarrassing for them.
Well, I think another factor, though, is that Bernie referred to himself as a socialist. And I think there was a great fear of what that meant and what was going to happen, and also because, well, when we got on the Board and discussions opened up a little more, we started addressing world issues. At that time, the threat of nuclear war was much greater than it is today, and there was a lot of discussion around that. And this whole Civil Defense Office was boosted as a way to legitimize bringing the issue forward. But those early years, I think really we accomplished more nuts and bolts kind of thing, like Terry said, you know, reforming the accounting system, establishing youths and arts offices, and things like that, which weren't really politically that exciting, but I think did a lot to establish our credibility as being able to run the city and to point out a lot of things that really were mismanaged.
And in those early years, we didn't have, you know, that much clout on the City Council. In fact, progressives have never had a majority of the City Council. But there were some times we were able to back the mayor. Like, I remember the trash incinerator proposed for the inner veil, that had already gone through in the Paquette administration, the bonds were there, and they were ready to start construction, basically. And Bernie Sanders had to veto that. It would have been an incredible financial mistake for the city, it would have destroyed the city financially, and also the pollution, obviously, and the people in the neighborhood really were up against it. And we were able, Bernie vetoed that, and we were able to sustain his veto. So we weren't able to actually do that many initiatives that went through the City Council. Most of the initiatives of those years, we did by creating independent citizens groups, the Women's Council, the Youth Office, Arts Council, Battery Park Concert Series, all those kinds of things were done...
In a shadow government.
In a shadow government, because Bernie wasn't allowed to make his appointments first, and then when he was, it's like, none of our initiatives could go through the City Council. So we sort of had to do it on the side of government rather than with the government.
But as I recall, it seems like we were able to cooperate more with the Republicans on the Board at that time. They supported us on putting the insurance out to bid and doing some of the other things that we did.
I've always heard that, you worked better with Republicans.
Early on, right.
Which surprises people, because they were the minority.
It wasn't their town either. It really was the old guard Democrat city.
They saw it as a way for them to get in the fun.
I mean, if you look at the makeup of those two parties, the leadership is, some people sort of, maybe it's an oversimplification, but it's sort of like, Republican Party was sort of like some merchants, some stockbrokers, and that kind of Republicans. But the ruling group that was, you know, sort of in power in Burlington were the people like landlords and the small business people of other sorts. And it's sort of like, they were two different groups. I mean, it was largely ethnic, French and Irish Catholic Democrats, and the Republicans didn't like them. And the reality is, Republicans were into some of our good government proposals, like the insurance, putting that out for bid. It just makes perfect sense. The Democrats, it was their friends that they were giving the deal to. They didn't want to take the money from their friends in the insurance company.
And I'd like to ask you some real boring questions, the nuts and bolts of, you're an informant, you're telling us of what was going on in the early 1980s. What were your meetings like on Monday nights? What time did they start? What time did they end? I mean, do you have stories?
Meetings in the early 1980s started at the traditional time, which was 7:30. Meetings were extremely long. We often would not leave until after midnight.
Generally?
Generally would not leave until after midnight.
And we may have only gotten halfway through the agenda.
We may have only gotten halfway through the agenda.
And this is weekly?
Yeah.
Weekly, basically. We always took a little bit of a break in the summer for a couple of weeks, but that was about it. So the meetings were very long, the agendas were extremely packed. And actually, that's one thing, as Terry referred to as the shadow government, we could do, was jam the agenda with items that we felt needed consideration, even though they might not pass, even though they would receive a little bit of discussion. We made an effort to make our agenda be part of the agenda.
Did you have pre-megings before the Monday night meeting?
Yes, we had pre-megings that were described by the press, I believe, as the Mickey Mouse Club and all kinds of other assorted things. We would meet every Sunday night at one of our houses, we usually rotated around, and talk about the agenda, talk about issues, try to come to consensus. And we were described by the press as a...
A block.
A block.
Blind mice.
Blind mice.
This is the Burlington Free Press, not the Vanguard, right?
And it was because we generally did vote as a block, but being a minority group, voting as a block is an extremely good strategy. But inside of those meetings, we often had extended, long discussions which had disagreement and so on and so forth, until we could actually get to a consensus point. And so there was a tremendous amount of political work that was going on on those Sunday nights. In fact, in some ways, more political work than it would actually happen when you were sitting in that council room.
We didn't always just discuss the agenda, though, because we would also discuss initiatives that were in progress, that any of us may have been working on individually, or someone in the administration may have been working on, so that by the time it got to the agenda or into a resolution form, we were all in agreement before it got to that point.
Those would be three-hour meetings, easy, too. I can remember going home at 11 o'clock more than once, for sure.
Is there anything that you all disagreed upon, and you went in and you agreed on, because you had the Sunday night meeting? Anything that was passed that still leaves maybe a sour taste or a feeling like, I'm not sure I really wanted to back that, but because of the party?
Well, I know Bernie and I had disagreement on the woodship plant, because when I was elected, it wasn't built. The bonds had not been floated yet, although they had been approved by the voters, I think, at that point. And I think that was the year before I was elected. And I didn't know Bernie before I ran. I met him when I became a candidate. We had a meeting like Rick did, and discussed several things. And we were not on agreement on the woodship plant. And when that item came up on the agenda to approve those bonds, I think you and I were probably the only ones who voted no.
Of our neighborhood.
So the reality is that we would argue, points out on Sunday night meetings, and if we couldn't come to agreement, we didn't come to agreement, and we'd vote our own conscience. I mean, we never, nobody was ever, had their arm twisted in a way that they felt bad about, I don't believe that's ever happened amongst progressives. It's just that we share a certain commonality of basic principles about what's fair, about empowering people without much power or wealth. And so a lot of those principles, you argue them out until you figure out, well, what's the best way to carry forward the principles that we basically share. And so in most cases, on the controversial issues, we would come to agreement. But some issues, like, I don't know, like an ordinance on feeding seagulls or whatever, it's like, there's not a, you know, a progressive position on the issue, you know? It's like, so we would, you know, people just vote however they choose. But the Sunday night meetings were very, very important. And I remember somewhere where, you know, I prevailed over Bernie Sanders, I think it was on the issue of the land trust, we'd given some money to the land trust in one year, and Bernie wanted to maybe put some money into a program for down payments for people to buy their own homes. And I said, no, it makes more sense to put it into perpetually affordable housing in the land trust. And we went around and around and around, and finally Bernie Sanders went along with the majority of, and backed off his proposal. So we've all had cases where that's happened with each of us individually. We had an idea, and we argue it, and we backed down to some extent. But it's never been where we thought the, we voted against what we thought was a right thing to do. I don't think it's ever happened.
But do you ever look back and think, I think we were too hard on the landlords at the time, or is there any issue that you just feel that maybe we went a little too strong on? Because by the mid-'80s, it became more mainstream. I think progressives became more, well, accepted.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we ever did anything that we felt that way about, but there were things where we would diverge. And like, they talked about voting against the woodship plant, I voted against the Alderman Plan for the waterfront. There were various times where we just didn't come to agreement. But whenever it was a group vote, I mean, I think we all felt good about our votes.
Yeah, I think you have to remember that a lot of the people, and I always said this, when I'm screaming and pounding and ranting and raving at the meeting, this is One Voice, I'm representing hundreds of people who can't be here tonight, that are feeling twice as angry as me because they can't afford their bills, their utility bills, or they can't afford the rent that the landlord's slapping up. So, and we were five, and at most six at our best stage. And we were looking at seven, eight people that absolutely did not agree with us. So we had to press our points very hard. And I think what we learned over time is, yes, you have to press your point and make it as accurately and as determined as possible, but there's also times when you have to go talk to someone, too, and work that through, and try to get their vote from that angle, too. And I think we got better at that over time. And that might be the softening, but the convictions and the desire to make something happen in terms of a positive vote.
How about the waterfront? It was such a major issue at the time.
I think particularly, I'll just finish up one point on that. I think particularly in the early years, there's almost nothing that we could look back and say, we regret doing that. Because we did have some philosophical ideas, such as trying to prevent property taxes from impacting the elderly in such horrendous ways as they do and continue to do. So we worked very hard to look for ways inside the city charter to change the way in which city services were being paid for, such as user fees and so on, that would take some of the pressure off the poor property owners.
Well, we were forced to implement reappraisal.
By the state.
So we had to.
They were looking for...
So we had to look for these kinds of things. And, you know, when you look back on it, if we had had more authority under the charter, we would have gone faster and further. But we were actually constrained and restrained. We were constrained and restrained. And so I don't think, I can think, I can't think of one thing that was a measure that I regret. In fact, I think that we could have gone much further.
I'd like to add one more thing. After every election, once a year, we would have an all-day retreat, we would go someplace, leave the city. It would be all the elected officials, all the administration, any advisors or key helpers on issues. And we would brainstorm for a solid day and establish a strategy for the year, what were the top issues that we wanted to accomplish, what direction were we going to go in, and then assign those things out, who was going to work on specific issues. So through the year, as things came up, they were, it was all things that we knew and things that we all supported in principle, working out the details, you know, came later.
Oh, and one thing about the property tax thing is that that, we actually got as far as getting items on the ballot to change the city charter, to allow the city to give preference to elderly fixed-income folks, to be able to change the way we collected property taxes. Some of them, we were successful, homestead exemptions, things like that, because we realized the property tax is probably the most unfair way of taxing people, because it's not based on ability to pay. And some of them, we got through like a business classification, but others...
What was it based on at that time? You said it was not based on the ability to pay.
Well, the property tax is not to this day, it never has been based on ability to pay. I mean, somebody who might be only getting social security, bought the house when it was $5,000 many, many, many years ago, now it's worth a lot, not because that they have a lot of money, but because of development nearby, and they can't afford to pay the property taxes on the house, and they don't have enough money to do it, and they're forced to move. People literally were forced out of their homes, and probably it's still happening. And we tried, and some of them, we got through, others, we actually got approved by the voters on the ballot, and then the legislature, Montpelier, shot them down, because the way it works...
We all went down and testified, Montpelier.
Only the legislature can change the city charter. We could pass it, the voters could pass it, but if Montpelier said no, it was no, and that happened.
And the thing that was striking about all that property tax stuff is that I can remember saying, 42% of the property in Burlington is not taxable. So 58% that is taxable has the burden of funding the whole infrastructure of the city. So, and then, so that's when we began the whole diversification. Well, we go after utility bills, were paid by the tax-exempt properties as well as the people who pay property taxes.
And the excavation fee.
Excavation fee, all these things that, up to that point, if you were tax exempt, you were exonerated for paying any type of fee to the city.
One of the big problem areas, of course, when we talk about the other percentage of non-property taxpayers, was the place that I worked at and still work at, is the university. So the university was receiving free city police services when needed, free fire services when needed. They paid, obviously, for their water, but they didn't pay for the damage that was done to the streets when the water mains had to be dug up. The city taxpayers paid for those things. So while this is very detailed, you can see that the impact of that much property not on the tax rolls made the taxes much higher for everyone else. So we worked very hard at those kinds of issues over those early years.
You know, the other thing, as we're talking, I remember is that when we would fight so vigorously for something, another measure of why we had to do that was that out of some 105 commission seats that the city had, we had about two or three. So we had no power whatsoever, and all the city departments turned...
You've got to talk about the commissions, talking about the early years. I mean, to this day, I mean, Burlington is got a bizarre form of government, where everybody assumes the mayor and the city council run the city, but in reality, the commissions, to a large extent, do. And the commissions are non-elected, they're appointed by the city council. But they, nobody knows who they are. It's like, if you have a problem with, you know, the police, you call your city councillor, you call the mayor to complain. Unfortunately, the mayor and city councillor have no authority over the police. It's the police commissioner, who nobody even knows the name of. And in those early years, as Gary said, it's like, there was maybe one or two people from the Old North End, wards two and three, at most, and there were a handful of women. It was basically upper-income white men from the Hill Section in the New North End. And that's fine, those people might have been wonderful people, but it didn't reflect the diversity of the city.
Did you change that?
Gradually, over the years. In the early years, we couldn't because we couldn't get a single commissioner appointed. Eventually, we got enough seats. Finally, we had six seats in the city council. And then with the mayor voting, too, we were able to have these tie votes. And with the tie vote, they finally had to settle and bargain out seats. And so we managed to get commissioners in, finally.
When did we get the sixth seat? Was that in 1980?
When George Tabo won, was the sixth seat. And I'm not sure which year that was. It's sort of a blur.
I want to talk about the waterfront. It was such a big issue when I moved here. And where were all of you on the Alden waterfront?
We were all over the waterfront.
Let me start with a little of the ancient history about the waterfront, not before us, but how I started out. And maybe some of you don't even know the whole story on this, but I was appointed to ordinance committee. And ordinance, one of the first ideas that we had to protect the waterfront, this is way before Alden, was to rezone it. Now, the waterfront had been zoned pretty much so that private developers, as they wished, could go in and build anything that they wanted there.
Right up to the edge.
Except for the, right up to the edge of the water, with very, very little restriction in terms of height or setback or anything. So theoretically, and actually before we were elected, there were proposals for tall, spire-like buildings and big convention centers with towers and all of these kinds of things, expensive, upper-income housing. These were some of the things that were being floated by developers. And so we had the idea that we should try to rezone it. And Peter Clavel was just at that point, this must have been '82 or '83, just at that point, had become the director of Community Economic Development Office. We rewrote an ordinance which would have restricted public, restricted development down there in terms of all of those things. So that buildings would be low and so on and so forth. We brought that in to a committee that was an appointed committee, again, called the Waterfront Committee, over which we had no power. And we brought it in and they...
Oh, the Waterfront Advisory Board. That was right. We had no...
We brought it in together. We brought it in as progressives. Peter and I were the only ones at the meetings, and it was summarily voted down in about 30 seconds by Republicans and Democrats. And the old guard, it just, bam, it was dead. And it never went anywhere. So that was the beginning of our concern and our fight, to try to have as much public access and as much downscale kind of very small development down there.
People access.
Okay. So then it started to move from there.
But that history is critical, because that was what we were afraid would happen if we weren't able to get something else through. Now, the Alden Plan had, you know, a significant amount of public park space, like, many times more than had ever been considered by the previous proposals. A lot of us didn't think that it was ideal, but some people, Bernie Sanders being one of them, felt that if we can't get this development locked in, whatever is developed down there is going to be far worse. Because you see what these guys want, they won't even look at their rezoning. So it was the fear of what could happen, which would be far worse, that motivated some of the people to support the Alden Plan. Because compared to all of the previous proposals, it was like 100 times better in terms of park space and community access and not being an enclave for the rich. Some of us felt that it still wasn't good enough and that it would have negative impacts. And so some of us said, no, we think we should continue the fight and try and get something even better yet. But you have to understand that background of why people thought that, you know, this is better than we're going to get otherwise. And so that's sort of what some of the motivation for why...
When you say some of us, you personally?
Well, I was one of, I did not support the Alden Plan, although I supported certain steps of allowing it to come to a vote and so on. And that got a lot of attention, the Neighborhood Planning Assemblies. We had had hundreds of people at the assemblies, and it generally got support throughout the city.
But there was a small movement of people that wanted just bike paths and green space. Who was the person?
Rick Sharp.
Yes, Rick Sharp.
No, no, he wanted development just on the other side of Lake Street. In fact, he wanted the bike path and trees, but he wanted development on the other side. But there were some people who referred to themselves as Greens, followers of Marine Bookshir and so on, who wanted nothing. They wanted a nature preserve, although it was, you know, toxic soil because it was all fill land, but they still, they wanted, you know, muskrats and so on.
That was more mid-eighties, though, I think, when they came in.
That was a little later, yeah.
My feeling was that, and I supported the Alden Plan, and at the time, I was chair of the Aldermanic Waterfront Committee. And we had, I don't know how many scores of public hearings, got as much input as you would want on any public project. And they were, obviously, the developers were sensitive to some of the requirements of the people and what they said. And then I had the luxury of visiting with the architects, both in Burlington and down in Boston, and visited other water fronts around the East Coast. And I, my conclusion was, this could be a winner, that people in our wards, and I think across the city, were going to be able to get down to that waterfront, finally, and have some fun. We were going to get some tax revenues, but that wasn't the sole reason for going ahead because where prior it was. And that was a good thing. I think, you know, looking back, probably it was too much too quick for people. And Burlington, I think, wanted more of an evolution on the waterfront, which we're getting. I mean, I think that's what's happening today. But it was, I thought it was great.
It is, it is interesting, however, that the ordinance that we proposed in the beginning to rezone the waterfront is now passed. And so by the time it did pass, the thinking among the Republicans and the Democrats had evolved. And my view is it might not have evolved unless there had been the kind of pressure that we had applied and the kind of work that we had done consistently over all of those years. It took a long time for people to really understand those issues.
Yeah. It was such a, it became not a vote for what's the right waterfront, but it became an absolute political decision. And because the progressives were this way, and the Democrats had to be on the other side, and the Republicans were a third view, it was almost destined for defeat because of that alone. Where I've seen water fronts and major developments take off, it's not the politicians who are running or orchestrating pro and con, it's these citizens groups that combine, you know, the average citizen, business community, and civic leaders coming together, and not the politicians. And it became such a, who is going to win the elections based on whether they're pro or con for the waterfront? That hurt, especially when you needed two-thirds of a ballot vote. And that made it particularly difficult.
Now, there were a lot of physical changes on Church Street in the early 1980s. Did you have anything to do with that downtown changing?
Actually, not a lot directly, because the bond issue for doing the marketplace had been approved, you know, been knocked down by the voters a couple of times, and the third time, it was finally approved, right before we came into office. And so the construction started right about when we first came in. And so that was, that was an initiative of, you know, I'll admit, Paquette administration, there were some good things about that, and there were some bad things.
How about the vendors? Did you have anything to do with the number of vendors?
Well, we fought to make sure that the vendor fees would be affordable and so on.
Absolutely. A lot of work on that.
In fact, I was on the ordinance committee, and we worked hard with a group of vendors. And our most famous one, of course, our hot dog lady, was the representative. And we made, we made it very clear that, and worked very carefully on what the license fees should be for those, both citywide and on the marketplace, and worked with them to try to make it fair for everybody. And I think we expanded, working with the Church Street Marketplace Commission also, we expanded the number that were available. A little thing, but an important thing for the marketplace.
It may soon go up to $3,000 a year to have a card. It's 1,000 now. Lois Baudochy, the hot dog lady, we just did her oral history, April show. And she's mentioned it May triple. So they need some activists for this again, I think.
I'm sure that's something the progressives would...
Rather have a raffle or lottery system for getting on there.
Zoe, I'm interested in you a little bit, because there weren't too many women in the council at that time. You said there were few Republican women?
Well, Sadie and I, to begin with. And then the following year, I think Diane Gallagher was elected from Ward Six. And I'm not sure if Linda Burns came on at the same time or not, or if that was maybe a year later.
I think a year later.
Yeah, that was when, I can't remember whose seat she was on. Well, one of the funniest things that went on was the debate over what do we call ourselves? Are we Aldermen, are we Alderwomen? And they asked me, when I was elected, what do you want on your plate? And I said, well, Alderwoman, sure, that's all right with me. And when Diane and Linda were elected, they made up their plates, Alderwoman. And they objected. They wanted it changed back to Aldermen. And the Free Press did a man-on-the-street question, which was in the paper.
Man on the street.
Yeah. What do you think, you know, should the women on the board be Aldermen or Alderwomen? And the consensus was, well, whatever they want. And they changed their name, placed back to Aldermen.
Jeez.
But I didn't have very much in common with the other women on the board, certainly not politically. It was interesting being a woman on the board, because it's definitely male-dominated. The whole time I was there, there was never a woman president of the board. And I tried a couple of times, but never made it. And the first year I was elected, I had some problems. Bob Patterson did not recognize me, or cut me off, or there was one issue, there was one issue in particular that I wanted to be recognized for, and I approached him before the meeting and said, when this comes up, make sure you recognize me because I want to address it. And it came up, and he immediately recalled on someone else, and the issue was postponed or sent to committee or effectively killed. And I was really upset because I had approached him to begin with. So I wrote him a letter, and I cited three or four examples of what I thought was unfair, not recognizing me. And, oh, there was a big mess in the paper, the Free Press, that I was peevish and all this. And Bob Patterson's explanation was, well, I'm left-handed, and so I always look to that side of the board, you know? And the funny thing is, is I was sitting on that side of the board. So that excuse didn't fly. But anyway, he did become more sensitive to it after that.
We had some amazing fights. I mean, things like where you sit and so on. I remember that one year, we wanted Mayor Sanders' table to be next to the city council table so we could, so he could be sort of part of the discussion. But they wanted, Democrats and Republicans wanted to sit on this table sort of behind the city council so we couldn't make eye contact. And we had this whole fight about where the mayor should be allowed to sit. And then there was other times about whether he should even be allowed to speak at the meetings. I remember when Alan Gere was first elected president, the first meeting he presided over, he endeavored to not let Mayor Sanders speak at all. He said, this is a meeting of the city council, you can't talk. Even if it was an agenda item put on by Mayor Sanders, he put on the agenda, he wanted to explain it, he couldn't be recognized.
Well, he pushed the button to turn off his microphone.
We finally stormed, we walked out of one of those meetings.
Before you guys came that night, I got there early, and Bernie's desk was moved to the back. And I went about putting it back there, and Alan Gere lost it. He was absolutely, how could you overrule me as president of this board? I said, I'm sorry. I sat on the table. I said, you're going to have to move me with the table if you want this back. It's absolutely wrong. And we went through this big thing, and then people started coming into the room, and it was too embarrassing for him to continue this tirade, to pull it back behind. But it was absurd.
Seating around the table was an interesting power play. The president of the board appointed all committees, as well as where you sat on the board. And there was just this image thing that whoever sat closest to the president of the board was more powerful or had higher rank. And the further you were out on the horseshoe, well, the less, the less that you, less that you were. It was pretty...
Needless to say, we...
We were on the end. On either end, you know?
That's why I asked you about your ages. It sounds so much like the 60s to me. This abrasiveness, this sort of questioning authority. And, I mean, I'm sensing there wasn't a lot of PR, even on your part, as far as, like, let's try to get along with these guys. A little bit, we're tired of this, and maybe rightfully so, but...
Let me say that there were attempts made. And I think that there were attempts at the negotiation level and at the PR level. When it came up to electing the commissioners, and when it came up to us being appointed to our various committees, like the ordinance committee and so on and so forth, there was always some horse trading going on to get votes. So we would vote for this, they would vote for that. And there was always a negotiator that was appointed from each group. So there was usually a Democratic, a Republican, and a progressive negotiator. I was a negotiator one year. And we just sat in the room and said, well, okay, ordinance committee, who do you want on that? Finance committee, who do you want on that? And it went back and forth and back and forth. And in those early years, we had so little power that we usually ended up fairly much on the unpreferred committees. Committees that had very little influence, committees that had very little power, and the committees that really weren't going to affect changes. So even though we worked hard at negotiating, the coalition of the, what we sometimes call the republicrats or the demicans, was really and truly a coalition. And they stuck together, and they were as much of the fight as we were of the fight.
Absolutely.
And then things started, as we got more and more experienced, things started to change. For example, President Gere would often, or maybe he wasn't the president that year, he would often come with us on certain issues. And then other people would come with us on certain issues. So I think that we were more experienced politically, and they were also seeing that we were the evil empire. And also, we were here for the long haul.
Was there any attempt to invite some of these people to your parties? I mean, sometimes when you get to know them as people, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I can remember at my house...
In fact, we had, I remember that when Leopold was treasurer and so on, you'd have parties there, and there were a lot of folks that would come from various different parties. So, yeah, we did interact with them socially. It was not like we were, I should say, the very first year or two, it was not like that. It was, it was siege. I mean, they were refusing the mayor to have a secretary, they were refusing any of his appointments, and it was, it was like, they referred to us as fungus. It was like, it was war. I mean, there's, it was a siege mentality in the mayor's office. Like, they had to be careful about what they would say for fear that there might be, you know, wiretapping of, by the Democrats, that Bernie Sanders' mail was opened illegally by Frank Wagner, the city clerk, and he was finally reprimanded and given a suspension by the city council because, you know, it was just outrageous stuff happening. It was a very siege mentality. It's true that eventually, once they realized, especially once Bernie Sanders got reelected, that was what, they said, okay, we gotta work with the guy. And that's when things became calmer. They no longer had that stonewall of, we're not going to, we're not going to let this guy be mayor. And so it was definitely a two-sided war. After that, there was much more camaraderie and some joking and some good feelings with various members. But the first two years, no, it was, it was pretty, it was brutal.
You know, going back to the women's issue, Sadie being from Ward Three, Two, we would talk a lot, and it was, it was just too much, the anger and the emotions around different issues was just overwhelming for her. And she had been in the legislature eight terms, I guess, up to that point, and never experienced anything that was so, I don't know, angry and emotional and negative. And she really, she was a master of one lines, and she still is the master of one lines. But it just, it pained her to go into these fierce fights. It was a very male-dominated type of arena. I think it just, you had to really have your fists on the table and ready to go.
What was it like on the street? You're telling me what's happening in your personal meetings and at the Alderman meetings. What was it like when you left City Hall and you're on the street, you go to a restaurant to people tell you things?
It was great.
Do you remember those days?
It was great.
Lots of phone calls at home.
We had a lot of support.
Lot of support. The people in our parts of town, man, they just couldn't thank us enough for what we were doing for them. Finally, people were standing up and saying what they had felt for years, that you could beat City Hall, that we were City Hall. And it was a wonderful thing.
The citizen involvement and government in Burlington just blossomed after eighty-one, eighty-two. It was, it had been this very small, tight clique of families, a few families that ran Burlington government to a very large degree. And suddenly, we had all kinds of citizen volunteer committees that were established for, you know, like I mentioned, the youth program, arts, women's programs. And people were involved in helping decide how the community development block that money, which we get from the federal government, should be distributed. The neighborhood assemblies, we created those neighborhood assemblies. I sponsored a resolution, got support from the planning commission even. And we created neighborhood meetings that are still ongoing today. I mean, they're not big, beautiful, you know, models of great democracy, because they are pretty small. But in those days, there was a lot of participation. And sometimes there still is in some of the neighborhoods. And the number of people, the sheer number of people involved in input and decision-making in the city, I would say, more than quintupled. I mean, it was just a dramatic growth of involvement. And people felt, I remember there was a pollster that did, a business pollster, and they were doing a poll for one of the other candidates in some election. And one of the questions said, do you know who your Alderman is, your city councillor was, do you know which ward you live in? And they had done polling all over the country for different political parties. They had never seen a city where so many people knew what ward number they were in and who their city councillor was. The level of political involvement and interest and knowledge in Burlington just blew them away. They'd never seen anything like that.
Because it's a college town? Do you think it's--
No, no, nothing to do with the college.
Oh, no. It's just regular folks.
University students have never played a significant role in municipal elections in Burlington. There was the year that the Democrats and the Republicans on the voter board tried to deny students the right to vote by saying they'd have to come down to a special meeting and, you know, give them extra hoops to jump through. And we challenged them in court and got them to back down. But by and large, students have not played a role in Burlington's progressive history in a major way. It's been the neighborhoods.
I think another--
Interesting story.
I think another aspect of thinking about what it was like on the streets is to talk, for each of us to talk a little, just very briefly, about how it felt in the ward. I come from Ward One, which was largely a student ward, the hospital, the university, and then kind of a growing student population among the old Victorian homes. So we did things to try to change this thing of people parking on people's lawns and get some of the cars off the streets where it was much too crowded. We got the sidewalk program going citywide, we got the tree planting program. And one of the neatest things that I can recollect is just walking down the street, and somebody would wave their hand and say, hey, Rick, thanks a lot for getting my sidewalk. Now, that's called, in common parlance, sewer socialism. But I mean, taking care of a neighborhood and an environment isn't sewer socialism for me. It's bringing government to the people, to fix things that are broken, to give them the services that they needed.
Quality of life, really.
It's a quality of life issue. And I think that that's something that I really felt over those four years in my neighborhood.
Well, Gary and I, we worked pretty closely on the Old North End Development Committee. And we had a chunk of money out of community development block grants, which came from the federal government. And we put together a program, we wanted to try to revitalize North Street and return it. It used to be once a very thriving business district. And it had been neglected for years and years and years. And of course, there was no way we were going to turn that around immediately. But we developed a program to try to get businesses to improve the looks of their facades by offering paint and materials to repair their buildings. And we also worked to change the zoning to preserve the residential character. We changed it to neighborhood commercial, so it would preserve residential character while allowing small businesses to move into some of the vacant storefronts. And that was very hard work. We worked with the community development office pretty hard to try to attract new businesses. We attracted a locksmith, a pharmacy.
Burlington College.
Burlington College. We surveyed the neighbors in the area to see what they wanted, you know, pharmacy, a bank branch, which we were never able to negotiate up there. But services like that, that we worked very hard on trying to improve. And the Heritage Festival on North Street, tried to develop a sense of community around what was the Old North End's downtown.
And the other thing that you did very effectively, and I worked on, was getting rid of all, or decreasing the number of bars.
Right.
It's way, way down now, you know, it's only two or three. When before, it was just a street full of bars.
See, that's one of the things that historically is often misrepresented about progressives. I mean, ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of our time was spent on things that are just basic quality-of-life issues around the neighborhoods, around tree planting programs. I mean, Burlington gets all kinds of awards from Arbor Societies and so on for the reforestation program, the sidewalk plowing, the street repaving, the basic stuff like that. But we also would challenge the federal government on priorities. Like, when they sent down the rules saying, in case of nuclear attack, Burlington should evacuate to St. Albans. This is their plan, and they were going to tie certain money to these things, and you're going to have to make plans for doing that. So we offered a resolution saying, we refuse to make plans for the death of the planet and how we're going to go to St. Albans to save ourselves in case of nuclear war. We're not going to spend money planning how to evacuate Burlington to St. Albans. And so we challenged the federal government on a lot of things around issues of nuclear war, as Zoe mentioned, but also priorities on the federal budget with Reagan cutting this and cutting that. We were to offer resolutions. And also on some international issues. I think the invasion of Grenada by the United States military was debated for more time on the Burlington City Council, all two hours, than got debated in US Congress.
So Terry, a lot of people disagreed with that, that why is the council talking about national issues? We have you here to talk about our local issues. And I know, we only have a few more minutes, that's like a loaded comment.
Well, the reality is, as I say, less than one-tenth of one percent of our time was spent on those things. But some of those things were just dire issues that our constituents said to us, our federal leaders are ignoring us on this issue. We need a voice. We need to have media attention and public attention brought to some of these issues of life and death for nuclear war and things like that.
Well, and those issues did affect us financially as well.
But you're saying one percent of your time?
Much less.
Okay. So I think there's a misconception there. Most people think that you spent a lot of time on this.
That's because that's whenever we did have one of those items, you know--
You got the headlines.
Couple times a year, there would be publicity about it. And the opponents, because they didn't want to, they didn't want to say, no, we want nuclear war. They would say, no, we don't think we should talk about this. We want Ronald Reagan to lead us on this issue. And we say, we don't trust Ronald Reagan's leadership on this issue.